Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence. I'd like to announce this meeting is being recorded and televised by WHCA. I'd like a motion to approve bill on payroll warrants.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like a motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Public forum, is there anyone here who would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Approval of meeting minutes, open session May 20th, 2025?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Open session, May 27th, 2025?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? And June 11th, open session.
So moved.
All those in favor?
I'll second it.
Okay, second and all those in favor? First item on the agenda is that Tom O'Brien is here to discuss the following, the--
Can I interrupt? Sorry, bro.
Oh, yes, sorry.
John, did you have anything to say in public forum? No?
Thank you.
Okay. He just arrived.
Oh, he's just adjourning today.
The public.
Oh. Where are we? Tom O'Brien is here to discuss the following, the PCRA unfunded liability for Whitman and the pension obligation bonds, PO-- is that PO? POBS. Tom, welcome.
Thank you, and thanks for having me, I really appreciate it. I was saying earlier that there aren't many people that I would love to come and spend an evening with on a beautiful day like today, other than, of course, the Whitman Board of Selectmen. I'm happy to be here. I did want you to know, and it's no surprise, that your town administrator was on top of this issue. She originally invited me back in July. She actually sent me an email on July 3rd, which I responded to on July 3rd later that afternoon. We were trying to get me in as soon as possible. This is the earliest that my schedule would permit, but rest assured, you're the first of perhaps many opportunities to talk about the Plymouth County Retirement Association. What I thought I would do, if that's okay, is just give a quick little bit of a highlight and talk about a few things. It may take about 20 minutes and then time for questions afterward. Then we'll talk about pension obligation bonds kind of as a separate topic, if that's okay with everyone. I did want to thank your town administrator, Mary Beth Carter, for her service on the Plymouth County Retirement Association. I think everyone here knows that she served with us for, how many years was it, Mary Beth?
Seven years.
Seven years on our board, and we are in good shape and good standing largely because of her service. So we very much appreciate that and the time that you spent with us to make sure we're in good shape. I also want to thank her for hosting a, I would say, kind of a retirement forum here in Whitman a few weeks ago. She covered both retirement and social security and a few other things. She had invited our new executive director, Lauren Durham, here as well, and a chance for her to get out and to meet the community. So Whitman was her first stop, thanks to Mary Beth's effort, so we really appreciate that. The first item, I gave a little packet for each of you, and the first item on the packet is a history of the Plymouth County Retirement Association. So we're going to start at 1935. No, we won't, we won't go that long, but it is important to know, people don't understand oftentimes how we came to be and why we exist. This is up on our website, so please feel free to print it out and understand that we're qualified under MGL Chapter 32. We represent approximately 52 different member units, and our job is to make sure that we have enough money at a period of time to cover the retirement for all the employees in our system. I'm going to turn you to the second page, though, because a lot of people are talking about this full funding and where did that come up from and how does that exist and why are we working toward that goal? And you'll see, 1988 and up until that time, it was, it was a little bit of a Wild West, where it was a pay-as-you-go system. And so each community was only paying the cost for that year. And what folks realized is that there were significant costs that weren't being accounted for and liabilities that weren't being accounted for that needed to be. And so legislation was passed, which required every retirement system to begin to collect enough money to cover all retirees should they retire at any given point in time. And that ultimately is what full funding is. And in 1988, they gave a 40-year target date, and they expected every retirement system to be fully funded by 1928. I'm sorry, 1928, 2028, 40 years. Essentially, think of it as a mortgage, mortgage to be paid off over that period of time. Made sense, working toward that goal. In fact, the Plymouth County Retirement Association, before I was there, was doing a very good job and then continued to exceed and was able to bring the funding schedule back at one point to 2022. So at one point in time, in the late 90s, Plymouth County was going to be fully funded by 2022. What happened? Well, we all know the financial crisis of 2007, 2008 hit this country very hard, had a significant impact on the financial pillars of our society and, in fact, had significant impact on becoming fully funded. The legislature, in its wisdom, changed the law, you can see this, in 2009, to allow the funding schedule to be changed from 2028 to 2030. It's interesting to me, because I served in the legislature from 1996 to 2006, I follow all this very closely, and I was surprised that on the day the legislature allowed that extension, the state system extended to 2030. I thought that was a bit irresponsible to do it that day, but I think they were really concerned about where they were on a fully funded basis and the cost. Needless to say, Plymouth County was a little more incremental in its approach. Subsequently, in 2010, they changed the law to allow the funding schedule to be extended to 2040. Also on that date, the state extended its funding schedule to 2040. Plymouth County did not, we extended our funding schedule over a period of time to 2028. And that is essentially gets us a little bit more current. In 2014, we made the rounds with our member units and said to them, we really believe that getting to fully funded is important because it will take a burden off of your budgets and get us to where we need to go, freeing up long-term cash for projects that you have. And so we entered into a discussion where we said, if we can keep increases at between 7% or 8% each of the next few years, we should be able to reach that benchmark and be fully funded in that timeframe. Everyone's contributions into the system are their own, and so you'll see that some increases for some of our members are higher than increases for other of our members on an annual basis. That happens if a community decides to hire more people, pay a higher salary average than neighboring communities, hire people toward the end of their career into the system at a higher salary. What we have, a unique opportunity to explain to our members, is the cost of this unfunded liability is the result of hiring decisions made in each community. It's not the result of anything the Retirement Association is doing. Our job is to make the best investment we can, generate performance that helps defray that liability and bring it down. But our members are the ones that make the decisions that result in the liability that they each have. And so one of the bellwethers really since 2010 is if your increase was higher than 8%, you were, you were higher in certain areas than your neighboring communities, if you were under, then you were lower. In other words, your payroll was a little lower or your salaries were a little lower, same thing, or your incentives for people toward the end of their career were a little bit lower. I will say this, we were faced with a decision, and I know that Mary Beth was on the board with us at the time, where they changed the mortality table that we were required to use for our funding schedule, they being the American Association of Actuaries. And it was, it was demanded that all pension systems use this newer schedule. However, it didn't say when you had to implement that schedule. We were late to adopt that schedule simply because we felt it was an incorrect schedule. We felt that it didn't recognize really some of the impacts of things that we were seeing on the ground. COVID then hit, which actually we believe we should have changed that schedule and that the American Academy of Actuaries should relook at that, but they didn't. And so shortly thereafter, we had to adopt this schedule. In doing so, it had an impact on our community, so we did have to extend our funding schedule from 2028 to 2031 to keep the increases in that 78%. So we are now, as we sit here today, scheduled to be fully funded on December 31st, 2031. You'll know that's in fiscal '32, so sometimes there's some confusion there. But if we're able to stay the course, we will be fully funded, and in a second, you'll see what that means. If you turn to the second sheet that I have, that presented to you, this comes directly from PERAC, which is our regulatory agency. They provide this information on an annual basis on each of the 104 systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so you can compare apples to apples. This, I think, is a valuable piece of information for all of you to have. You can see who all the board members are, you have our contact information, our new administrator, Lauren Durham, is there. But I did want to point you to the top, and this is through 2024, that is, PERAC does it on a calendar year, so this is their most recent. Couple of interesting points. One, our return in 2024 was 9.82 net of fees. I mentioned that, obviously, because we're pretty pleased with that performance, but of the 15 largest systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that was the best return. And we are almost regularly at the top of our performance metric in terms of meeting our assumed rate of return and meeting and beating our peers. I'd even point your attention to 2022, where you'll see that we had a loss of 6.68. And you may say to yourself, well, treasurer, why are you pointing out such a bad year? Well, I pointed out because the rest of the country was down 17 to 20%. And so at that year, we were actually in the top 1% of all pension systems in the country because we did not suffer as much of a loss as others. We play a fairly defensive game. You can see there in the right that our fully funded schedule was 2031 and the rubric by which we hope to get there. There's our asset allocation, we're pretty pleased with that mix, and you'll see, again, as of January 1 of 2024, we were funded at 67.5%. Turning to the next page, this is a comparison, and I know that Mary Beth will be familiar with this document, we try to compare ourselves to the state every month. And we do that because the state is a huge system with lots of resources at its disposal, and we want to make sure that we are competitive. We're a small organization, but we want to make sure that we're nimble. This is through June of 2025, these are net of fees, and you can see that our performance for the month was 53 basis points, better than the state. For the calendar year to date, they're a bit ahead of us, they're beating us by 39 bps. But just so you don't think this is an outlier, we beat the state at a one-year, a three-year, and a five-year number. So we're pretty pleased with our performance, we think we've been very successful at what we do, and want you folks to know, you're in good hands. The last page is the one that you probably want to focus in on the most, which is your valuation report from the January 1, 2024 report. And this is pretty much your cliff notes, if you will, of your retirement. This valuation report is done every two years, so you can track it all back, it's up on our website, you can see how you perform as a community, you can see how you perform compared to others. I did give each of the members of the board a copy of the full valuation report, and that's underneath, because I did go to a presentation a few weeks ago, and I only brought the one sheet, and everybody wanted the full book. So you have the full book, if you want to look through and see something else and see how other towns are doing, you can take a look and compare. What's interesting to note here is that you can see we've already presented your FY26 contribution, your FY27 contribution, your increase between '26 and '27 is 7.3%. That's right, kind of in the target market of your member communities and where we would expect that you would be. What I wanted to say, though, that once we hit full funded in fiscal year 2032, your cost decreases to the normal cost. So instead of paying 3.904 in 2027, you'll be at the 9.03. Significant savings if we can get to that point. It makes sense to try and get there as quick as we can, freeing up cash to deal with the many obligations that you folks face. Other point I wanted to make on this page, we were one of the first boards, although I've been told the first, but I haven't been able to confirm that, to offer discount if you pay the assessment all at once on July 1. You're required to pay them twice a year, if you want semi-annually, but if you pay it all upfront, we give you a discount and save some money, and I know Whitman has taken advantage of that over the years. So in short, we continue to do what we can to get the best performance from our assets. We had a meeting a few weeks ago, we're now at $1.6 billion. As a frame of reference, when I started as the chair in 2006, we had about $475 million. So we've done fairly well over the years in performance and meeting our goals and our objectives and our bogey to make sure that we cover the cost and provide that additional benefit to the communities. I'll stop there, if there are any questions about the Retirement Association in general, I have a bunch of other things to chat about, but I know it's oftentimes better if it's a conversation than just a presentation.
Sean?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the presentation, it's great to have you here. I definitely have major concerns. I know that hitting the target early in 2031, as you say, is a, is a target that's attractive because it frees up more money for us to invest otherwise. But in doing so, for me, I would think of a bit of it like a pros and cons. If I was to set up the pros and cons of paying it off early, you know, there's some good long-term financial kind of benefits of doing so, pay a little bit less interest maybe or that kind of thing. But the cons of paying it off early are pretty significant for our community. This is probably something that you're not so familiar with. Obviously, you don't know the details of our budget very well. For us to make these, the assessment in each of the next five years, and it's a significant assessment, it's going to go up significantly. To put that in perspective, maybe just to give people a little bit of a perspective on that, we just built a new DPW, it was about $20 million. We're going to pay off the DPW in about 10 years, 20 years, sorry. Our assessment that we have to pay in five years is a little bit more than $20 million. So Plymouth County is asking us to pay off a little bit over $20 million in five years. In what we would typically do, in the typical course of borrowing money, we would do that in about 20 years. So it's a pretty hefty assessment that we're being asked. We're at 3.5 now, and it's going to go up to about $5 million. So these are big numbers that are gonna, it's going to drastically take up all the bandwidth of new growth that we're going to take in, which means we'll have to consider things like laying off firemen, laying off policemen, and we haven't had the easiest, the last 12 years, our budgets have been tight. It's not like we have a lot of flat to trim at all. We're at the bone. So for us to lay people off, potentially close the library, these are, these are conversations like, from your chair, you're probably thinking, oh, he's exaggerating a little bit to make a point, but we're not. If we have to make tight cuts over the next five years, these are the things that are on the table, and it's drastic. So the cons for me about paying it off early are significant, and they're lengthy. If we were to push that out five years, for instance, we would save a significant amount of money in our, in what we are paying into our yearly budget, which means we'd pretty much sustain and we'd be able to pay it off in 10 years. So for me, like, the pros would be, we would bump up our taxes and we would decrease services in order to pay it off this superficial timeline and maybe put a, you know, a feather in the cap of the Plymouth County retirement. But for us, if we were to push it off, we would hold on to those services. We wouldn't have any drastic decrease in what we're talking, you know, just maintaining our, the services that we provide our, our community. And financially, it's not a huge burden that we're, that we're taking on. So for me, it's kind of a no-brainer that we should push it out. I know logistically, how you push it out is more complex, but if we could, I would do that in a heartbeat, you know?
Can I, could I respond?
Oh, yeah, please.
First, I, I don't want anyone to think that I don't have the experience to understand the challenges that you folks face at the local level. I served on a school committee for a number of years, I served as a state rep. So when you talk about the challenges that communities face, I understand they're very real, and we don't take them lightly. What's interesting from our vantage point is that of our members, we have a number of them asking us not to extend the funding schedule out, and we don't have the choice to do it for one or two, we have to do this collectively. So there are a number of our members that heeded the warning back in 2014 and made very tough decisions through the course of those 10 years to put themselves in a little bit of a better position. Now, we don't make any assessment as to those decisions because every community is different, every community has different needs, but please know that we listen, we hear, I'm willing to go anywhere at any time, I met with a group of superintendents, I met with a group of teachers to talk about these issues because we understand they're real. The challenge, though, in addition to the fact that we can't just do it for one or two, we'd have to do it for all, and some of our members don't want us to do this, is talking about resources and other things available because there are options communities have to deal with some of these challenges other than the extension of the funding schedule. And don't think that we're making this decision in a vacuum to have the Plymouth County Retirement Association look good. We're doing it because the relief valve that some of our communities are desperate for is right around the corner. And it seems, at least from their perspective, not to be a good financial decision to pay more interest, because you will, you don't save any money, in fact, it costs money. In fact, the extension of a year would cost the average community, and I don't know where Whitman fits into this, and we can look at these numbers, though, an additional $1.6 million in total cost. So we understand the relief that it would provided initially, but the cost-benefit analysis, short term and long term, really doesn't work out in most instances.
I disagree, honestly. I think the same argument could be made with somebody buying a house. You could say, well, instead of paying a 30-year mortgage, just pay it off in 10. And financially, for somebody sitting in a bank, they'd say, well, that has financial benefits, but somebody who still lives in the house could never do that. It doesn't make sense. I would never, would never pay so aggressively $20 million in five years here. It's just, it's something that we wouldn't do normally, so to have to be, to have to do it in such a short amount of time for, like I said, a superficial timeline feels really aggressive.
Well, it's not superficial, we have to follow the law, so there's only so far we could go anyway. And in fact, the state probably wouldn't allow us to go out more than a year or two because they would consider that imprudent. So we couldn't just automatically go to 2040, our regulatory agency wouldn't probably allow that. So you'd really only be buying a year or two. I look at it more as though you sign up for your mortgage and it's 30 years, and a year '25, you go to the bank and you say, well, you know, I don't have the money in my budget, I need my payment to go down, I want to extend my mortgage out another five years. I don't know who does that, I think many banks might do that as long as the interest rate went up a little bit. So this isn't, we don't see this as a five-year period, it is now, but we look at the term that we've been doing this since really, you know, '35 and then '88 and over the last few years. So it's not, it's not just a five-year push. And even if we were to extend it out, it doesn't provide the relief that people expect that it will, some.
With the comparison, the mortgage, I think, is a good one, but in a typical mortgage, you'd have like an equal payment. You know, this is going up 8% each year, and I don't think people realize how much that actually is. You know, we just, it just went up $300,000 somewhat thousand dollars this year, it's going to go up $260,000. We only took in less than $1 million in new revenue last year. I can't emphasize how big of a portion of the new revenue it's taking up, and it's going to increase, like you said, about 8% each year, even if we're, if we're holding tight, 8% each year. A typical mortgage wouldn't do that, we would be able to get comfortable with $3 million and it would just be steady. But it's going to go up 8% and then 8%, and then 8% for the next five years. That's not a small number, that's, like I said, if we're at 3.5 right now, it's going to be above $5 million, you know, so it's very, very aggressive for the way Whitman financially operates. I can't stress that enough, really.
I do hear what you're saying, I'm not going to, I would say this, on a mortgage, you do have increases in the mortgage because your home insurance goes up, and so mortgage payments every now and then, if you escrow it, they increase as well, sometimes that's a challenge. I understand what you're saying, but the relief is short-term and oftentimes isn't nearly as beneficial. Perhaps a combination of, and we'll look at this again, we have another valuation coming, the earliest we can do it is 1-1-2026, when we're scheduled to do it. That report takes three months to generate, so we'll be looking at this in April. So your numbers aren't going to change in '27 or '26, and you don't want them to anyway. And we'll take a look at it. The good news is our investment performance has been pretty good. If we have some opportunity to bring down those assessments, we may.
So it's sort of, because Plymouth County Retirement that we're talking about for all employees in Plymouth County is different than the specific budget that's on the website for Plymouth County, like, employees that--
Absolutely, completely different.
But there was, in '25, you, you got $6 million in investment return.
No, that's Plymouth County.
Plymouth County?
Yes.
Yes, so $6 million--
Yes.
--in investment return.
Yes.
That seems significant to me, you know, because prior to that, it was only at like $150,000, and even, like you said, that one year, it was negative.
They have a very good treasurer at Plymouth County. But then, and just so you know, what the county did with that was that they dedicated $3 million to pre-fund pensions.
I saw that.
Yeah. And so Plymouth County, we heeded our own advice in 2014. Every December, we've been putting in more money, we've been prepaying that mortgage along the way to drive down our cost because we knew this was going to, we did the math just as you guys have and saw where we would be in 20--
My question, where did this $6 million come from?
Yeah, so largely it came from interest on the ARPA funds.
So interest on ARPA funds isn't Plymouth County funds, like capital P, it's Plymouth County, the, the small group of people that were handling those funds?
Yes, Plymouth County. I don't know, you're thinking maybe the Plymouth County Retirement, which is all the members, Plymouth County, the 27-member communities. If that's your small P, then yes.
I'm saying, if a significant amount of money came in because of investment income on, on ARPA funds, that money maybe should have been distributed to the towns of Plymouth County, not specifically to that, to the very small pocket of people who would benefit from it, which then allows you to take that $6 million and put it into your small budget, and then, you know, that's paying down significantly, really.
One of the interesting challenges that we'd love to talk about, ARPA, we had is the Plymouth County Commissioners dedicated every dollar that came in to the communities, back to the communities. Regrettably, some of the communities were unable to use the funds that were made available to them. We are continuing to give more money out where possible to get it out to the communities on projects, but it had to have been obligated by December 31st, 2024. So we didn't have, there isn't the ability to do what you were suggesting. It had to be projects that the towns submitted before that deadline, and we asked them to submit them, we asked them to submit for projects above and beyond their initial allocation. Of the 27 communities, only 10 did. So those 10 will see additional resources that we can dedicate to those projects that qualified as of December 31st, 2024. The federal law was written very poorly.
That seems to make sense to me, but $6 million was, was brought in on investment income, you know, and that's a lot of money, you know what I mean? So as we sit here and we're struggling to, to make the assessment and thinking about layoffs and that kind of thing, you were able to take a $6 million lump sum and significantly pay down your liability. That seems to be like an inequity in the, in the ways in which we both have to struggle to meet the assessment, you know? $6 million, like, because prior to that, you weren't bringing in $5 million, you were bringing in $150,000 in investment.
Well, and prior to that, though, we did make a $2 million prepayment, a $3 million prepayment by, so Plymouth County, small P. We've attrited out positions over the years, our workforce is less, we're actually, our budget remains the same as it was 20 years ago. So we have really tightened our belt to free up resources to pay those obligations down. Now, it's a little easier for us, we don't have schools, we don't have public safety, we don't have some of those challenges, but, you know, we, we took a very hard line in doing as best as we could with the resources to attrit out. So we've actually been making payments since 2014. I agree, we had an opportunity to make another one, and I thought it was a good prudent use of those resources. But only two other communities pre-funded since 2014, and everyone had the opportunity to, and I would think-- And I would think that over that 10-year period, there has to have been some monies that have come into these communities, however small, that could have been used to pre-fund the pension obligation. It is not for us to decide that, not for me certainly, but we were surprised communities weren't seizing that opportunity.
I think the one major variable that I think you need to consider is the whole harmless situation, the decrease in enrollment with, with the schools. I don't know if you're familiar with the dynamic or not, but it's, it's had a significant impact on our community specifically because over the last about 11 years, our enrollment has been slowly declining, which means the state aid has been just, you know, plateaued from the, because of regional school districts. So that has really made our finances tight. And then you put the assessment on top of that, the combination of those two things are, are a significant burden. I don't know how else to say it, you know? We're, we're getting hammered. And we do, Mary Beth is, is extremely thorough with her financial planning, and I think we've been trying to forecast out, and I think that's one of the reasons why I'm so, I'm sending such a strong message. We're doing financial forecasting, and the numbers look terrible, not good. So any relief that we can find, you know, we're not, we're not significantly, we're not hiring like crazy, you know, like we're not doing those things and...
So I appreciate that. You'll be glad to know Mary Beth calls me regularly. She was just asking me what the health insurance assessment was going to be into the next year. We try to keep that down, and that has been a benefit to those that belong to Mayflower. But I hear what you're saying.
Thank you.
Did we want to segue? Any other questions about retirement? Because we want to talk pension obligation bonds.
Yes, please.
Yeah, but I wanted to...
I think, I take away for the board is probably, you know, there's some areas, you know, we currently have a, a policy that the board will dedicate, you know, 10% of, of free cash that's certified to capital stabilization and 10% of the remaining to general stabilization. We may want to look at that 10% remaining toward pre-funding the pension obligation because I, I agree, this is not going to get easier in the next couple of years. And even taking $200,000 bites out of it will probably help long-term.
And my only recommendation, I, I actually think that's a very good idea, to do it in December because you maximize the value of that contribution because you get the full year's credit by making that contribution in December. So, good thought. Other questions before we segue on to pension obligation bonds? No?
No, segue.
So, can I call you Sean?
Yes, please.
Thanks. You have a brilliant idea that we've had too. I think pension obligation bonds are a very good idea. I think they're such a good idea that almost 15, 20 years ago, we proposed doing a pension obligation bond for the Plymouth County Retirement Association. At that point, we would have been bonding close to $300 or $400 million. We had negotiated with Stephen Nicholas as our broker, and we would have been able to get an interest rate of about 3%. But as you know, in order to do a pension obligation bond here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you need to go to the great and general court, who oftentimes considers themselves, and I can say this, having served there, Oz. And the great and general Oz, or court, sometimes does not think that anybody outside of their purview has the wherewithal or temerity to do things as complicated as a pension obligation bond. And they were very concerned at the time that we did not understand that we were taking a somewhat flexible obligation, although I would argue how flexible it is, and making it a fixed obligation. But our counter to that was, well, we have a 7.875 bogey, and I can get it out to the street for about 3%. I can tell you the savings would be significant. We got it through the House. We were unable to get it through the legislature because candidly, the then-governor at the time did not want to do a pension obligation bond and killed it in the Senate. We did not die. We filed it again three years in a row. It met the same reaction and death that it had the previous three legislative sessions. We thought we got smarter in 2021, and we said, okay, you're not going to allow us to do it for the system as a whole. Let us do it just for Plymouth County, just for our obligation, just for our $30 million or whatever the number was. We filed a piece of legislation. We had our local legislators file the legislation. We got it through one branch of government and couldn't get it through. The response by A&amp;F consistently had been that they just don't want to see that become a hard asset. Quite candidly, I'd be leery of doing one now, given the interest rate environment. It made a heck of a lot of sense to do it in March of 2020, when we were trying to do it the first time. But it's a very good idea. You'll point out that Brockton has one, but they had already had legislation passed. Quincy had already had legislation passed. The only one that I'm aware of that's relatively new was Andover. And why they let Andover do it and other people is beyond me. There may have been one or two others along the way, but oftentimes, they come with belt and suspenders, different language, and it is a source of frustration that we've been unable to do one. There are only so many times that I bang my head against the wall before I stop. We just decided not to file it again because we didn't see it going anywhere. Although I think the senator did file it anyway, just as a, a matter of course. So I think we have it filed for Plymouth County. We'll watch and see where it goes, but I have no expectation it will be, come what. And I think in this environment, even less likely that it would.
What, what is the going rate for a pension obligation bond today?
Yeah, so the problem is you've, you've got to pay a little bit higher than what we see. So I would think you'd probably get it at about 6.5, 7. So still a little lower than the bogey, but not enough to really make a difference.
So we're paying about 3.5 right now, and it's going to go up above $5 million over the next five years. We'd be paying 2.5 million for the next 10 years. That's what it would be. So we'd save, you know, a big chunk of change in next year's budget, you know, if we're just comparing, instead of 3.8, it'd be 2.5 if, as we're looking at, you know, preparing '27. So that's a significant savings, practically speaking, for our community.
I 1,000% agree with the concept. I would support any effort to do a pension obligation bond. I would be disingenuous if I didn't share our stories and our frustration. I mean, if they're not going to do it in 2020, when interest rates were at 1, and we could get one at 2.5 to 3, I can't imagine they're going to do it in this environment, no matter how hard we jump up and scream.
Are people screaming because they're gonna, the impact of the assessment is going to affect their community, or are people jumping up and screaming because they want to save some money on the long-term finances?
In terms of supporting a pension obligation bond?
Yeah.
I think that people would support it in order to reduce the impact on short-term situation, so create a, a bit of a bandwidth.
Yeah, that's our argument.
Mm-hmm, to do one.
Yes.
Yep. I, believe me, I get that. I've made that argument. I have a shelf of files on pension obligation bonds. And it was very frustrating because the one we created, we were, we were understanding that the legislature was not a fan of these, in particular, the administration at the time. And so we even created a debt fund, a reserve fund, that had never been done before. So there was another pool of money in case something went wrong. And that still wasn't enough for them to pass the legislation. And it, it got killed by A&amp;F.
The, I guess what's throwing me off a little bit is, what's the, the difference between the 2040 and the 2031? The 2040, is the legislature in favor of the 2040 or the 2031?
So I apologize. The legislature passed in 19, I just want to make sure I get my dates right, in 2010, that the most you could extend the funding schedule was to 2040.
2040?
Yes.
Right.
That's the most you could do.
So, but is that...
I don't know any...
Without pension obligation bonds?
Completely without pension obligation bonds.
So Plymouth County could extend it to 2040?
No. So no, no system, I think, is at 2040, maybe only one or two. We have a regulatory agency that would not allow us to extend it out that far. They would consider it imprudent. The most they would probably let us extend it out would be two to three years.
So then, when you overlay that with the pension obligation bond, where works...
Well, they're two separate things, and I apologize.
I get that, but the timeline, I guess, the 2040, if we could just stay within the 2040, is that acceptable with the legislature or no?
Well, in terms of a pension obligation bond or in terms of the funding schedule?
Pension obligation bond.
They, they have not supported the concept of pension obligation bonds. So I don't know, period.
Regardless of timeline.
Regardless of timelines. We, in fact, the one we, the final one we proposed for Plymouth County had a 10-year timeline, and we did, so it was 2031. Would have been the same timeline, but we would have saved two some odd million dollars. I mean, the savings, it's, it's a little harder now, given this interest rate environment. I do believe the Fed's going to have to lower interest rates, but you really want to see 200 bips, and a bib is 100 of 1%, before you even think about it in a differential. So you'd need interest rates. Our bogey is, is the 7.875. So you'd really want to see it be 5.875 before you even thought about doing a pension obligation bond. And we're not there yet.
If we're not talking about bandwidth in a local community?
Correct. Well, just even financially, the market probably wouldn't buy those bonds if you go to Wall Street. They just wouldn't see the value in it. There's not enough money to be made.
For the everyday person, it just feels funny that a town can't take out a loan to pay off an obligation. You know, we can pay off a loan, take out a loan for the DPW for $20 million, but we can't just take out a loan for $20 million?
Nor can Plymouth County. The only people that can take out a loan is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now, they, they have, as you know, State House notes, but those are all short-term. There are rans and gans and bands that you can take out, but those are all obligated revenue streams. We obligated a revenue stream in our proposal on a pension obligation bond from assessments, and that still wasn't good enough for them. It is terribly frustrating. I agree with you, but that is the law. It's not, it's not an option. Nothing prohibits a town, however, from, so what a town could do is set money aside in a debt service reserve fund, but what you would do is go to what Justin was suggesting and pre-fund your pension obligation because you're guaranteed the rate of return that we've been producing over 30 some odd years.
Yeah. I mean, if we could do that, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So...
Right. There are other ideas, and I, you know, Mary Beth is always looking for savings and thoughts budgetary. I, I will come in and talk in any capacity at all. I don't know if we want to discuss any of those other ideas at this point in time or later, things that can, that towns can consider to help with those, those very real challenges that you're facing.
Yeah, we don't have to discuss it now, but this is an issue that will definitely be, it's more on the back burner than the front burner, you know, with our current budget, but definitely something that I want to pay attention to closely, so.
Yeah, and I hope you have my number. Please call anytime. I enjoy these conversations. I learn every time I come out. It's important that I hear what you're saying, and I want, I want all of the members of the board and anybody that has, has watched to know that we, we understand the challenges that you face. This is not just operating in a silo or a vacuum. We're out here, we're listening to what you're dealing with, we're watching the next valuation report comes out. We're going to be cognizant of all of this. So the value of this discussion is having that in our heads as we're dealing with the next valuation report that comes out. Is there anything we can do to relieve that burden when that comes out? I don't know, but we know we'll be looking for it.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom. That was really, really a good discussion.
It was, and, and I thank the board for that kind of discussion. This is how, you know, we, we get places and accomplish goals and objectives. I'll come back if that's necessary or if we want to talk more about other ideas. You're thinking along the right lines, you know, planning that 10 years out is the way to go and begin to see it's hard to do, but it really gives you that foresight to say, okay, you know, what's going to be happening. And what I think all of us had a challenge with early on is decisions we make today have that impact, you know, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. So it's important to think of that. Anything else? I know you've got a busy agenda.
No, just so it's not to say that when you do the next valuation, that maybe it could be extended a year. I mean, that's a possibility, depending on how the valuation comes in. It would be considered or if things, the numbers really looked high.
Well, one of the things we're going to always do, as you were cognizant of, is, is not go above that 78% that we talked about back in 2014. And so when we did the mortality table, that was causing us to go above that, so we extended the funding schedule out.
Okay.
So we'll have to see. I don't know what's going to happen the rest of the year in the marketplace. Right now, we're tracking very well, but if there's a detriment, and I actually forgot to make this point, one of the other reasons we don't extend the funding schedule is if there is an economic crisis over the next four or five years, we need the flexibility to then extend the funding schedule out. And if we've already extended it out, we couldn't extend it out any further, and you'd then have to eat that entire cost. So that's why nobody goes out to the 2040, and that's why the state wouldn't allow us, even if we wanted to, because you have to have that flexibility in case there's another financial crisis like '07, '08.
Makes sense. Thank you, Tom.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can at least take some of the new business.
So I have to collect all my stuff? Didn't realize we were going to hold up the next business.
Oh, we're early, it's all good.
Yeah, no worries.
Take care, Tom.
All right, have a good night, Tom. Thank you.
We have a little bit of time before the public hearing with respect to the 40R Smart Growth Zoning District presentation. So let's act on the application of MCLLC Doing Business as Jiffy Lube, number 1918, for a change in ownership in connection with the fuel store's license at 691 Bedford Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any questions?
I thought I had read, is anybody here from that? I don't believe so.
Is anyone here from, from Jiffy Lube? We can hold off on that to see if they show up, and maybe they weren't going to show up '07.
Oh, I was just reading to see if it said that you must be present.
Letter said in our backup, just looking at this.
A representative of MCLLC Doing Businesses as Jiffy Lube must be in attendance. That's the only reason I...
Well, wait, not be in attendance.
Well, then we can go to, act to appoint Richard Blodge to the position of Member, Board of Appeals Representative, Economic Development Committee for a three-year term through June 30th, 2027, in order to fill an existing vacancy. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we did that.
I believe that makes a quorum.
Yes.
Okay, old business. You want to do a budget update?
Sure.
Sean?
Well, it'd be helpful to give a budget update on the ambulance receipts. The financial team had a long meeting just the other day, and I guess we finally feel like we're at the bottom of it. Couple of things. One, we're very clear now about how the process works, and I think our forecasting moving forward will be more precise and more accurate and more efficient. We're going to move forward, not tonight, but with the third-party collections, which will help with the efficiency. So, so as far as moving forward, that's a good thing. One complication that's not very good is that we realized that we overprojected in our, our projection for the ambulance receipts. The reasons for that were because we thought there was going to be a direct correlation between, we chose to raise ambulance receipts recently. We thought there'd be a direct correlation between how much money we raised and then what we would collect.
Sorry, we raised our billing rates.
Our billing rates, yeah. Yep. Sorry if that wasn't clear.
Yeah.
As it turns out, that's not the case. You can raise your billing rates, but that doesn't mean that the insurance companies and Medicaid are going to, are going to pay it. So that was a hard lesson to learn, but it was good that we learned it now. So that was a hard lesson to learn, but it was good that we learned it now. But it means that we're not gonna make up a whole lot of funds in the current fiscal year because of it. So good stuff coming out of it for sure, but it's not gonna solve any issues in FY26. So the indirect cost still remains a strategy that will have to go in front of town meeting and for us to consider. That's a, a strategy that could actually raise some revenue, but it's also gonna increase some fees to the towns, town people. So that would be a good discussion and vote. And then like the 40R Smart Growth zoning tonight, that'll be an interesting discussion and be good to get some information on that. It definitely will affect the 27, FY27, as far as potentially raising some revenue and some one-time fund incentives for, for doing so. So there's potentially some good news that way as far as FY26 that way. Not FY27 that way.
Town administrator report?
Sure.
Okay, I have just a couple of, of quick items. The first one is the Whitman Community Electricity launch that we did. The rates, the meter started running as of October 1st. We got a report on Friday saying that 79% of the accounts in town are enrolled in the Whitman Community Electricity program. So I think that that is pretty good. There were about 3% that was rejected, and those were for closed accounts mainly. 14% opted out, and 3% submitted for enrollment. But 79% participation, I think, is, is pretty good. And again, the town's rate went in, it's for 50 months, and our rate is 14.184 cents per kilowatt hour. And national grids rate, which is, I believe is through the end of January, is 15.484. So that's something good on that. The other item I wanna mention is the Recreation Committee is having a town hall trick-or-treat night on October 28th here at town hall from 4:30 to 6:30. And the children can come in costumes, and bags will be available for the kids to decorate, and they'll have candy crafts, movies. And it's recommended for grades pre-K through grade 5, October 28th. And then the last item I have is I've been asked to join the Whitman Advisory Board Appointment for BAT, Brockton Area Transit, for the Advisory Committee and for the Finance Committee. So I just have a letter that maybe you can sign after the meeting.
Certainly can.
Okay, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So we have seven minutes to go.
Count.
Actually, 12 minutes. Yes, go ahead.
I actually was gonna save this, but since we have a little time, I just wanted to address the public because of some things. I, I realize, to go back to Mr. Scriven's points last selectmen's meeting, that everybody is in, I don't know, a little bit of a funk. But I, in my roles in the community, I have seen people in more than just a funk, and I have seen some really desperate needs. So I just wanted to say to the, anyone in the community, anyone, if you need anything, please reach out to me. If you don't know how to reach me, don't know where I live, didn't see my phone number in the, the paper a while back, reach out to Mary Beth. Because I have a group of people, you know, in my life I've done a lot of things, and there's a lot of outreach workers that I can help provide some really basic needs for people. I'm heartbroken when I realize that people are suffering, or that they're alone, or that they feel their situation might be so desperate that they're afraid to be judged. I, I don't judge anyone. And with Old Colony Elder Services and the Board of Health and multiple resources of people that really care, I would hope that you would know that your privacy and that your needs would be safe with me. And we're a bipartisan board. I truly don't even usually half the time remember what people are, even though I'm independent. But this problem is across the board. It isn't one side or another. It's humanity. And right now, we're in a really tough spot where a lot of resources are being stopped or just slowed for the moment. And sometimes those resources are hard, especially when we're dealing with issues such as mental illness. So if you have somebody even that you're concerned about, please reach out, if not to me, to somebody. Because at the end of the day, that's all we can do is help each other. And I'm sure that many people have needs. And if I can help and anyone I can find can help you, just, just please let me know. Thank you. Thank you.
Very, very nice, Laura. And it's definitely necessary at this time.
Amen. Thank you. Glad that I had a little bit of time to say it.
I see that Dawn, Dawn walked in a little while ago. Dawn sent me a, a letter after the, the last meeting about the... Well, she came to the last meeting, gave us her, her thoughts, and she was talking about the regional agreement and if it was gonna be on the agenda. So I thought, I, I wanted to mention actually today that, that she had, she had reached out. It wasn't on the agenda. It's, we have a school, and I wanted to speak to you about it. We have a, we have a school committee, has members of Whitman on the school committee. I think they, do they discuss it? They're discussing it this week?
It's on their agenda tomorrow?
Yeah, it's on the agenda. The, the regional agreement committee is meeting in November. Just, Justin is bringing back to that committee the discussion that we had the last week. So I wasn't sure it needed to be on the agenda with the, of the, of the selectmen. You'll be going to the school committee meeting, I'm sure, letting them know?
I'll see how my day goes tomorrow.
Pardon?
I'll see how my day goes tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. It's, that's... I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't ignoring you. I wasn't, I wasn't around to, to answer your thing. But anyway, it's, we took, we took, we took seriously what you were saying the last time, and it just didn't seem appropriate tonight to be talking about that again. You talking...
Have you any question?
You have a question?
Yes.
About?
Just for public transparency, you mentioned email. Could you read the email?
I don't, I don't have it. Basically, basically what she's, what she said was that she referred to, she referred to her discussion at the last meeting. You can watch the last meeting. You can know what she's talking about. You wanna add anything to it, Justin?
No, I think I also will see how my day goes tomorrow to try to get feedback to the school committee before they make that decision as well. Because I think that it does seem that Whitman and Hanson are in different positions on the regional agreement than we thought at the last regional agreement committee meeting, so. Don't see anybody from Jiffy Lube yet?
What?
Nobody from Jiffy Lube has...
No, I don't think so.
Executive session?
Pardon?
Do you wanna go into executive session and do a couple of things quickly?
Um, is, is our attorney gonna be here?
Mm-mm.
Oh, we could do that.
Yeah, wouldn't take long.
Yeah. We could, we could do our executive, we could do our executive session. It'll probably ain't gonna take a few minutes, so. And then we'll come back into open session to do the, the public hearing with respect to, to 40R. Like, like a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 2, excuse me. Section 21A, Exception 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining. Litigation position of the public body in the chair so declares. Step 2 grievance, OPEIU Local 6.
So moved. Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, we're in executive session. We'll also, we'll also be doing an executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A, Exception 7, to comply with the act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements to review and approve executive session minutes 52025 and 52725.
So moved. Second.
Yes, 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 yes. We're in executive session.
We're ready. No, first we're gonna take, we're gonna take the vote?
Yes. So we'll announce the vote?
Announce the vote, yeah.
Pardon?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're back in open.
Okay, we're back in open session. Just like to announce the vote from the executive session. We settled a step 2 grievance with the OPEIU Local 6. And we also approved executive session minutes from May 20th of '25 and May 27th of '25. We took those votes in executive session. And now we are having a public hearing pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 40R and 760 CMR 5905-1 to consider a proposed 40R Smart Growth Zoning District and the submission of an application for preliminary determination of eligibility for 40R zoning. And that must be Jason DeRozier.
Correct. Also, where would you like me?
Um, you can, if that's comfortable for you, that's fine, and you are.
I'm Rhiannon Dugan. I work with Jason at Old Colony Planning Council.
Rihanna?
Rhiannon.
Rhiannon.
And she did all these great maps.
Rhiannon?
Yes, like Fleetwood Mac.
Like Fleetwood Mac?
Yeah.
Holy cow, I heard that today on the radio.
It's 'cause you knew I was coming. Yeah, I did the maps unless you don't like them, and then definitely somebody else did them, but...
Okay, Jason, the floor is yours.
Great. So good evening, Chair Kowalski, members of the Whitman Select Board. My name is Jason DeRozier. I am the Senior Planner for Housing and Public Engagement at the Old Colony Planning Council. And I suppose in full disclosure, I am also a Whitman resident. Lived here since 2018 with my wife and daughter, who is a student at Whitman-Hanson High School, at least for this year. So I'm here because the town of Whitman has contracted with the Old Colony Planning Council to pursue the potential of a 40R zoning district. 40R zoning is essentially smart growth zoning. Smart growth zoning through 40R is an overlay zoning district. So what that means is that the smart growth district sits over the underlying zoning. So it's sort of, if you think back to when you were in school, maybe the, the overhead projector with the, the clear sort of thing that the teacher would write on that could put it over something, that would be smart growth zoning. This is the area that myself, Rhiannon, and a couple of members of the Whitman Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Select Board member Evans have participated in a conversation to try to come up with a smart growth zoning overlay district. We essentially landed on an overlay of the MBTA Communities of 3A zoning district. You'll see in this map, the areas that are sort of that lighter purple are the areas that would be included in the zoning district. The areas that are, that darker pink is excluded land. You could not, you cannot build in those areas either because they're wetlands, buffer areas, or other forms of excluded land. And then the yellow, sort of to the, what is that? The west of the rail line along Essex Street and the northernmost part of the zoning district were not included. Those are sections of the 3A zoning district that are not included in the, the smart growth. So essentially, it's approximately 40 acres, give or take. Some requirements for 40R, it's as-of-rate development at minimum density. So the densities, the minimum densities for 40R is eight units per acre for single-family homes, 12 units per acre for townhomes, and 20 units per acre for multifamily housing. At least 20% of the units or homes built within the 40R district need to be affordable to households earning at least 80% area median income. Broken down by household size, for a household of one, this would be $72,950. For a household of two, $83,400. And 93, for a household of three, $93,800. So it's essentially the workforce, people who drive the buses, people who work for the, for the T, teaching, nursing, teaching assistants, nurses aides, those, those sorts of, sorts of jobs. Design guidelines are required under 40R. However, the design guidelines or standards cannot unreasonably impede development. And then 40R zoning, the preliminary eligibility application and the zoning bylaw needs to be reviewed and approved by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities before local adoption. And the way that, that works is that we have this preliminary hearing here to sort of provide the select board and town stakeholders to sort of ask questions, learn more about the zoning district. Any feedback that's received that needs to be done to tweak the zoning is done, and then it needs to be... zoning is done, and then it needs to be sent to the state for their review. There's a 90-day review period in which they might have comments and things that they would like to see changed. And so that's an iterative process. Ideally, we get it back early in the new year so that we can go through the internal town processes to get it on the town warrant for town meeting in May where it's locally adopted or not. So, the purpose of this evening is to provide you all with the opportunity to ask questions about the application itself, which was shared with you, as well as the draft zoning bylaw. And then any questions you have for me, generally about 40R and/or this specific zoning district.
Thank you for doing all the, a lot of the legwork on this. I'm impressed by the plan, and there's a lot that I like about it. One question I do have, I'd prefer that they be, I need more information, but just conceptually, it's concerning to me, like the transient nature of like a big apartment complex versus like townhouses that are going to be owner occupied and, you know, pride of ownership, that kind of thing. So, as the, as the current zoning sits, the development that's going to be had, is it going to be more towards like smaller houses for people who can, you know, affordable housing but owner occupied, pride of ownership, and less of the big apartment complex with a transient population?
Yep. So, to answer that, I might say both and, because you can't necessarily designate whether it's owner occupied or rental, right? The development community will determine what's financially sort of feasible for them to build. So I did change this map because I thought the question would come up. This is a residential sort of density map, or it's development by type. So the areas that are green are designed to be more sort of, I don't know, friendly, I suppose, to townhomes. So largely sort of along South Ave, a parcel on Franklin, if at all possible. Although, that development, that, that particular area was not initially included in the zoning area. There were some conversations around including it because I think there's a developer, a landowner, who wants to build a 40B in that, in that spot. And we thought that if we could get out ahead of it a little bit, the town might be able to realize some benefits that are available through 40R, the zoning incentive payment and the density bonus payments, which I'll get into in a minute. And sometimes developers prefer to go through the 40R process rather than the 40B process because 40R is more, it's more streamlined, more sort of, what's the word I'm looking for? I have it written down here. More, peaceful, predictable, rather than sort of going through a, a 40B process that can be somewhat unpredictable at times and drive up costs. So, long way of answering that you can't sort of designate you need to build homeownership units here. However, by looking at it, there will be probably some homeownership units that are possible here. However, a majority of it will probably most end up being rental.
Could I follow up?
Do you mean big apartment complex, or do you mean like a multifamily, someone's going to live on one side and the other side is going to be rented out?
So the unit mix will vary. So townhomes, what we think of as generally as townhomes from a planning perspective are two to three families, sort of, sort of this way versus this way, right? But they can't take both, both shapes. For multifamily, I wouldn't say that any of them will be sort of monstrosity buildings, I, I think, or, or sort of like overwhelming to the, the nature and the character of the town. The zoning sort of limits them as of right now to three stories. So, that sort of, in essence, limits over, the overall size. Now, you can have a bunch of three-story buildings next to each other. So, it's sort of residential density versus like building density, right? But there are sort of, what's the word I'm looking for? There are sort of checkpoints, I suppose, within the zoning bylaw to sort of limit height as much as possible.
Thank you.
Could I follow up on that? So, and one of the ways that we determined which ones we thought would be best for townhouses versus apartments, if you refer to this map here, the green ones are kind of, they're street-facing. They're facing other small homes, or they're facing small businesses. So it's trying to keep it more of a form-based code style. What does the existing area already look like? And then the ones that we have that might appear as a larger apartment building are mostly in unused industrial areas. They're tucked behind the train tracks. They're not that main view of Whitman, but allow you to get some housing density, kind of hidden in the bones of the town as it lays out now.
I have a, so I guess probably more for the public, but the, the same question I asked at the presentation you guys did downstairs. So, this plan basically overlays on the existing MBTA Communities' plot, you know, the intent being, if a developer's going to consider one or the other, we can maybe try to steer them towards the one that gives the town bonus incentive payments for, for additional density, rather than the by right that is already allowed under existing, under an existing overlay district. So, what, what incentive would a developer have when comparing, you know, existing zoning in Whitman, the existing MBTA, you know, 3A overlay zoning, and a potential 40R? Why would someone potentially choose 40R over the other, or, or 40B, you know, pursue the other option? We've got several avenues for them to pursue.
Yep. So I did do a, a great deal sort of research into both of those, since those questions did come up at the public information session in terms of how do 40R and 40B relate to each other or not? And then sort of looking at 3A and 40R sort of, in, in a similar setting. So I'll start with MBTA Communities, since that was brought up. Right. So the key incentives that are included in 40R and not in 3A is that obviously there's an upfront zoning incentive payment if the town decides to adopt the, the zoning. That is not included, obviously, in, in 3A. As well as the per-unit density bonus, 40S reimbursements are also included in, in 40R, so that-
Probably the biggest incentive that we would be looking at if this were, yeah.
Yep. So that's also included in 40R and not 3A from a developer sort of perspective. 40R does provide an additional level of predictable permitting. By right, with streamlined review by the PAA, as referenced in the zoning bylaw, that's the permitting approval authority, which for Whitman will be the Zoning Board of Appeals. And essentially, also, one of the other benefits, if the town decides to adopt 40R zoning, is that there's this idea or sense that this community buy-in, since the town did support it, and that additional layer of streamlined and predictable zoning, which again, is not always in place within 3A. And 3A is not really concerned with development. It's sort of zoning for multifamily housing. So there are going to be some areas in 3A zoning districts that you won't get a single unit. And so what we try to do as much as possible is try to think about how to use this as a tool to unlock some production in order for the town to realize some of the economic benefits, zoning incentive payments, density bonus payments, and the 40S payments that would be coming to the town. None of those are available through 3A. On the 40B side of things, which is a little more nuanced, but the way that ends up working out is if a town is under its 10% subsidized housing inventory, which Whitman is, a developer may still file 40B even within a 40R district. The 40B process supersedes the 40R zoning if the ZBA grants the comprehensive permit. If the town is at or above 10%, the ZBA can deny a 40B per, uh, application. In that case, the 40R zoning is the controlling framework. A municipality may argue that a 40B in a 40R district undermines the state's intent, but legally, 40B rights still apply unless the SHI threshold is met. Some practical implications, developers may prefer 40R, again, because it offers certainty and predictability without the adversarial 40B process. But some may still pursue 40B if they want more density, fewer design restrictions, or relief from affordability, mixed requirements in the 40R bylaw. For the municipality, adopting 40R can both generate state incentive payments and help increase SHI, which reduces 40B vulnerability over time. And so, if there is some development that happens within this sort of zoning district, 20% of those units are required to be affordable under state requirements for 40R. That might help the town get closer to its 10% threshold, which then you can sort of achieve possibly safe harbor over time. If a project goes through Chapter 40B, those units are not built pursuant to the 40R bylaw. Because of that, they do not qualify for 40R density bonus payments. The town would still get subsidized housing inventory credit for eligible affordable units, but no per-unit 40R bonus money would be triggered. The zoning is written in a way that, in an effort, hopes to make the development opportunities by the one particular landowner on Franklin Street to develop that through 40R and not 40B. So therefore, that would not cause any complications or, or trigger any, any, trigger 40B versus 40, 40R.
If this was passed, that, supported at the annual town meeting, permits could be pulled the day after?
No. So, the way that it works is that the, the application and the zoning bylaw go to the state for their initial review. They then kick it back to me and OCPC. It then works through sort of planning board hearings and other required hearings in order to get on the town warrant. If it's adopted at town meeting, it then goes to the state for final approval. And essentially, the Attorney General's sign-off. So there's a long process, or somewhat of a process. So it's not like the town adopts this, and then the following day, you have like 100 permits that are sort of looking to be pulled.
So, roughly, the town adopts at town meeting, and then a month later, six months later?
It's really hard to generate a timeline. I will say that any developer is going to do due diligence on any of these sites. The sites, I haven't obviously done any sort of testing of soils or anything. However, I'm willing to bet, and I would assume, that most of the parcels that are on Pond Street have some contamination levels in them, just because of the nature of the buildings that, that were there, the industrial nature of that area. And so, doing remediation of contaminated sites can take a long time, depending on the level of contaminants, the kind of contaminants. Murky, for example, might take a lot longer than oil, which might take a lot longer than, than other sort of contaminants. And so, there's a long process. If there's a owner of a, I don't know, a small retail business on South Ave that, you know, is thinking about redeveloping their, their parcel for any given time, that might work quicker. But it's really hard to like pinpoint a specific timeline on. It could be a year to three years in the short term. It could be longer than that.
Were you worried about the timeline with the AG office?
Kind of both, but yeah.
Okay. We obviously can't give any guarantees. We know that the AG's office is tied up with 3A and all sorts of other things. But this is the state's smart growth plan, and they are really invested, and town's adopting this still. So, it is still like on the forefront.
And in terms of approvals, if the town approves the 40R zoning district at town meeting, those approvals are generally quicker.
Thank you.
I think historically, if it's going to take more than about three months, we usually get a notice that it's still under review. It's not been rejected, but-
With this climate, I just can never say that I think something's going to go quick. I don't like to give promises. Oh, I was just saying that with the current state of government, I don't like to give promises that there's quick turnaround ever.
If I could, I just wanted to give one shout-out to our Assistant Town Administrator Kathy Keef, who submitted this grant application into One Stop shortly after we were approved as a MBTA-compliant community. And we were awarded, yeah, a grant to hire OCPC to develop this overlay district in the exact same place.
Any other questions?
Anyone else have any?
If I may?
I have a couple of questions, but-
If this were passed at town meeting, we would receive an incentive payment, just because we passed it?
Yes.
And when would we expect to maybe see that?
So again, that can sort of vary. I will say, the zoning incentive payments are received, from what I've been able to tell from historical votes that I've looked at, within a year or so. Much more sooner than that, but I think the average is sort of six months, two, two a year. Now, that could also go quicker, depending on capacity and, and time. I know EALC has done a lot of hiring over the last year, and so that may be quicker than that. I, that's something I can certainly ask the state about, and have that information while in advance of the town meeting. So that, again, like I said during last week's public information session, I want to make sure that people who come to town meeting and vote at town meeting on this are educated and informed on what 40R is and the implications, the impacts, the opportunities. So we'll be putting together a number of one-pagers and information. We also have a website for anyone who wants to look at it. It's oldcolonyplanning.org/whitman-40r. And that's essentially the project webpage that has all of the maps, the preliminary eligibility application, the draft zoning bylaw. It will be updated as I get more information and as more information is developed, so that folks can keep, you know, up to date on that, on that website. But one thing I'll do is reach out to my contact at the state to find out the timeline or sort of the turnaround on that pavement, because I know that's important for towns that are adopting this. Just in terms of numbers, and again, following the public information session last week, it was raised about fiscal impact analyses and sort of what the, the impact will potentially be. I did do one following that information session that evening. I will say, it's very, very rough. Unless you have pro formas, actual development budgets, it's really hard to determine the overall economic impact. But I plugged in a few different sort of scenarios, and have the following sort of fiscal data. So, the zoning incentive payments for towns range between $75,000 and $600,000, depending on your overall population. For Whitman, it would be a zoning incentive payment of $350,000. So the state would send a check to the town of Whitman for $350,000 if 40R passes. The density bonus payments are per unit. So that's 300, that's not 300, 3,000 for each new housing units that are built in the district. The, sort of the trigger point for that is a building permit. So when developers pull building permits, that is $3,000 per every unit that's the building permit covers. The one caveat, maybe, is that the $3,000 payment is tied to the actual development, because it's development of every unit that's built. And so there's a three-year threshold to, between pulling a permit to sort of when the unit should be built. At that point, if a housing, if I'm a developer and I pull a permit for 100 units, the, the state cuts the check for those 100 units based on the building permit. I have three years to build those units. If I don't build those units within three years, the state can clawback that money. However, I have not found any instance where the state has actually pulled that. I've noticed quite a few projects that because of COVID economic downturns, laying labor costs going up, building supplies and construction costs going up, projects had to be sort of reconfigured to make the numbers work. And the state did work with the town to sort of not pull back the money, but sort of granted extensions to make sure that they weren't pulling money from towns that passed 40R. Additionally, depending on the number of units, and so, I've worked out a couple of scenarios, because this is 40 acres, and sort of the zoning capacity that it could support, but I will say, this is sort of like, not, it's not plausible that you would see like the top number of units just because of the, what's already concentrated, what's already, you know, built along South Ave, the, the constrained land, the excluded land, so on and so forth, sort of potential remediation needs in contaminated sites. So-
Is it a plausible number or not plausible number?
So I have a couple of scenarios. Some are more plausible than others. And so for the more plausible side, and the more likely side, is 348 units. That would result in a payment, zoning incentive payment and density bonus payments of roughly 1.1,394. 464 units would bring in $1,742,400. 487 units would be $1,811. And then the full buildout, again, not plausible and potentially not feasible, given sort of the constraints with this area of 945, which can cause sticker shock, I think, to some people. But I would say, again, not plausible, not specifically feasible, would bring in both a zoning incentive payment and density bonus payments of $3,185. I've also did all those scenarios through a fiscal impact analysis, and all scenarios netted positive gains for the town in various sort of prices. 250 units would be one, essentially a million dollars in new property tax revenue. 464 units is 1.98 million in new property tax revenue. 950 units would be four, four million in new property tax revenue. Effect on individual tax bills, 250 units, essentially 81 million in new value expands the tax base by five to six percent. 464 units, 151 million in new value expands the tax base by approximately 10 to 11 percent. And 950 units, 309 million in new value expands the tax base by roughly 20 to 21 percent. All three scenarios produce a positive impact, meaning new development helps pay for itself and leave surplus revenue. The surplus revenue can be used to stabilize or improve town services. In the long run, it can moderate future tax increases on existing residents. I also looked at 31 years, I think, of enrollment data for the town of Whitman and did notice a decline. So this can also help increase school enrollment and sort of offset those costs would be offset. Any increase in material costs through the schools because of the 40R zoning, 40S payments help offset those costs.
Do you have any more details on what towns have received as 40S payments? Is it, justify those material cost increases?
Yeah, so I can now continue to look into that. The 40S payments aren't as easy to find. In some cases, it's sort of like who adopts a 40R district. However, by looking at the map of the communities that have adopted 40R, I could probably guess as to which ones have sort of gotten those payments. And so that's something that I'll make sure I have and can post on that website, once I have that information.
Yeah, if you could share some like model towns, I'd like to communicate with some of those towns to see how it's worked out, for sure.
Yep, I can certainly do that. I can compare a couple of case studies and contact information and send that. Any other questions? Because I have a couple as it relates to the zoning. So assuming that everyone has read the zoning, it is included, it's not required. However, there are some potential opportunities and benefits for doing it this way, but you don't have to, including mixed-use development, sort of commercial on the ground floor, residential above. Is there any desire or value in sort of including mixed-use within the 40R district? Or do you just want to make it easy, take it out, and just have it be residential?
I think to me, that including mixed-use would be one of the things that actually differentiates it from the 3A, which doesn't allow mixed-use. I don't know that it would be necessarily attractive to developers to have that additional option, but as long as we're not restricting, requiring it, I think it may stop for something different. I don't know if anyone else feels differently.
I would defer to some of these guys about, some recommendations about that personally. I mean, and I wouldn't want to make a recommendation, do we have to decide right now?
No, I would say probably have an, if I could have an idea about where people want to go within the next like week or two, because I need to send the application and zoning to the state by the end of October in order to hit the 90-day window for this to be on the warrant for a town meeting.
I would defer to Mary Beth, and if anybody communicated Mary Beth any major concerns, then I would defer to like the plan as is.
Because I think one of the reasons why it was included, or at least I included it, was because it makes some development maybe more feasible if you have sort of like revenue generating ground floor uses that might make, that might offset some of the costs that a developer would incur by having to remediate a potentially contaminated site, for example. Or just make sort of development in high-cost markets more feasible generally. One other question, don't remember what it was. I don't know, if I can remember, it must not have been important. Just look at the zoning. So the one thing I think that we might get some pushback, and so parking requirements, so because this is smart growth, I think the state likes to see reduced parking numbers. So we sort of, in the zoning, wrote it for 1.35 spaces per unit, up to 1.5 spaces per unit, depending on bedroom size. So 1.35 spaces for every unit that's a studio or a one-bedroom, and I think it's like two bedrooms and up, it's like two spaces per unit. Not that I can read the tea leaves from the state, because they may not have an issue with it, but there's a chance that they might push back on the higher parking ratios in smart growth in a location that's sort of in approximation to public transportation. So I just want to raise that as a potential sort of thing that might need to be worked out. But I have seen 40R zoning districts, i.e. Kingston, that meets or exceeds the 1.3 or even 1.5 parking ratio, so they might not have an issue with it. But just wanted to raise it just in case.
I mean, obviously, if it's a higher ratio than it's, or a lower ratio, then that would be a pretty good check on some of the bigger buildings. So to me, that's a good thing, personally. But you're just saying they could give some pushback on that.
Okay, and then the other question I had that I actually remembered is, right now, we cap density, or at least height, by three stories. I think it's 45 feet. Do you want to keep it there? Is there any interest in sort of looking at four stories? Or do you want to keep it at three? I don't have a preference either way, but I'm just curious in terms of maybe the zone, the area that's zoned sort of like more along Pond Street, that's sort of out of view is, because when you increase density to a certain, or within sort of, what I refer to as gentle density, or contact-sensitive density, four stories, so you would have commercial on the ground floor and three stories above it, or even four stories above it. Just wanted to get your sense on that. I have no problem keeping it at three. Myself and a couple of folks who worked on the zoning sort of worked it out at three, but just wanted to ask before I formally submit the application.
I'm thinking three is good.
Yeah.
My only question is, what is allowed under the 3A district? Because if we allow four there and only allow three on the 40R, we may lose those incentive payments.
Yeah, so the setbacks and the height restriction, or the minimum height sort of caps I got from the 3A zoning. So it's somewhat mirrors, except for the multi-mixies.
Yeah. Is the same true of the parking? Is the parking match the 3A, or was that a local?
No, so the parking for the 3A, if I remember correctly, and I will double-check, is, I think, 1.5. I sort of just split it up by threshold, bedroom thresholds, just to sort of try to tie it in, just a little bit different than 3A requirements, but also trying to adhere to some of the smart growth principles that the state has.
With the cost of asphalt at this time, too, reduce parking requirements can be a benefit to developers, because every extra parking space is another area that they have to pay versus grass.
Or even as it relates to, so all of the parking within the zoning is tied to the rear, the side of the rear of these buildings. So there's no like front parking, frontage parking. And then there comes to time, probably when projects are being proposed, that there's the conversations around trade-offs, would you prefer to have an extra parking space or green space, or, you know, another sort of amenity? And so it gets to a point where there's conversations. And so I think having it be 1.3 to 1.5 makes sense, depending on bedroom size. And a majority of what I would assume will get built under 40R is going to be smaller, smaller units, studios through two bedrooms. You'll probably have a couple of three bedrooms, but a majority of units will probably be the smaller unit typologies, which then will not have the overwhelming parking car needs, because it would be sort of the 1.3 side of things versus the 1.5 side of things. And so that's something also to think about and consider.
And just to reiterate Jason's previous point, that it's T-oriented. It's accidentally transit-oriented development, but not when you apply for 40R. You have to have a reasoning for location, and one of those is transit-oriented. So I think the pitch is to have a range of housing that also is closer to the T station.
You looking for a motion tonight? Like, are we officially?
Nope. So the purpose of this is just to sort of provide a preliminary opportunity for conversation around the application and the zoning bylaw before it's sent to the state for their, for their review. There'll be formal hearings in the new year before it goes to the town meeting.
Please.
Kyle agreed to be three.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Goldrosen, Chairman of the Board of Appeals. Jason, just a couple of questions. Is the draft bylaw on the website that you gave already? Okay.
It is a PDF version. I didn't want to include a Word version and then go back to it and have a whole lot of changes, or track changes, and so it is a PDF. If anyone does have questions about it, they can email me. My email is also on that website. But yes, it is available.
Okay. So I did want to comment on the parcel 185 Franklin Street. First of all, I'm not sure it's the correct...
Yeah, Reanna and I have already talked. We're looking at, it might be a parcel ID thing and not a mistake on our end.
I think the one, like two parcels further down that has an entrance from Franklin Street, yeah, is that 185? So is that, that'll be modified? Okay. So just to bring, make the board aware, the owner of that parcel is considering the 40B. They had met with the ZBA to have an informal discussion about that. But they, you know, they're, and they're going to go ahead and file an application with the state for preliminary eligibility, because that takes many months to get anyway. So the timing may actually work that they won't be ready to come to the town until we're approaching town meeting time. And they expressed a willingness to consider a 40R. Based on what the provisions of the 40R zoning wind up being, they'd have to look and see how many units do they get under that versus 40B. But they, they expressed a willingness to go with the 40R route if that's, if the town adopts it, they realized. And that was another reason why they wanted to start their own process, not knowing whether this would be adopted by town meeting. So, and that was a reason it was suggested to include in the 40R district. I mean, the way I look at this overall is, it's a subset, we're adopting a subset of the 40, of the MBTA 3A district, the only additional new parcel being 185 Franklin and some parcels being excluded. So the provisions, we'll have to look at how the zoning works out, but I think the intent on working on this was to make the provisions similar to those in the MBTA district, so that if a developer goes forward, we could get them to go that route and provide some revenue to the town. That's really, you know, the only comment. And other than that, in terms of number of units that may be built, with the MBTA district, again, we simply lay out the zoning, and it's up to the developers to say whether they're going to use it. So far, no one has, right? Same thing with 40R. Ultimately, this is sort of to enable development, it isn't to force development. Whether it happens or not depends on the economic feasibility from a developer's point of view. I think that's all I really have to say.
And for MBTA communities, your zoning capacity for that was 868 units. And so that's not far off from where sort of like max zoning capacity for this zoning district could be under 40R, although again, highly unlikely. But it's close to what was sort of zoned for, for MBTA.
Do you have a recommendation about the retail versus not retail?
Sort of of two minds. I mean, frankly, when I looked at the bylaw and I went over with Jason, kind of complicates the bylaw to have the multi-use. And so I think one argument about not including it in the 40R is that if somebody, first of all, I think the only parcels that would probably lend themselves to that are along South Ave. I can't see somebody building a development in Pond Street and wanting to put retail. It's just, it's not, it won't work. We've seen that elsewhere in town. So if somebody, remember, this is just an overlay district. If somebody has property on South Ave, wants to put a building up with retail on the ground floor, they could still do it using our multi-use overlay district existing provisions. So like, I mean, I kind of look at it that way and say, well, why maybe simplify things and don't include the multi-use provisions in the 40R district? But I could see, you know, the other side of it as well, but don't we want the revenue from it? So I, that's, I've sort of two minds on that.
So I think the way that it would work out contextually, in theory anyway, is if mixed-use was allowed along Pond Street, it's sort of similar in sense, again, not even one-to-one sort of trade-off or comparison, but the Steve Egan buildings that were built in Hanson on Main Street, that has like Restoration Coffee and a couple of other small sort of neighborhood-serving retail spots, where then you kind of extend sort of that walkable sort of thriving community feel along Pond Street that doesn't have that currently. And so, not that a developer would build, but it just provides them the opportunity to if they wanted to.
But, you know, I think that Main Street and Hanson situation is similar to our South Ave. I think the Pond Street is, we recently, the owners of the Bostonian Loft Buildings on Marble Street came to us, and we agreed to let them eliminate some of the retail or service space that they had within the development on Marble Street, not the portion that's on South Ave. And the reason was they found they just can't rent it as commercial space, so they're going to convert that space to apartments. And I think that would be the case to me with Pond Street. It just, it just wouldn't work for anything other, for retail space.
Also, I agree with you, because you have to think visually as well. We have Hobbit's Pond, and, you know, I wouldn't want to see a monstrosity. I really like everything you said, but one word I didn't care for was to kind of hide it. You know, I don't want anything hidden in Whitman. If it's going to be built in Whitman, I want it to be respectful of Whitman and an asset to the public. I can see many nice things being built where we all know it's a little dilapidated, but I wouldn't want to turn it into something that would take away from the beauty of, well, maybe I have too heartfelt tied to it, but I know how hard the DPW workers worked off-duty and the health challenges that arrived while they were doing it to make such a beautiful boulevard. And I, that's just such an asset to the community.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks, Jay.
Anything else? Am I good?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you again on October 28th, this time for the Open Space Recreation Plan.
I did those maps, too, but I probably won't be here.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, lots of hard work. Thank you.
Okay, is someone here from Jiffy Look? Well, I guess we just pass over. Okay. So I think a motion to adjourn is probably in order.
So moved. Second.
All of them favor.
Aye.
We're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll save this for next time.